The time being seven P M on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our Coram of the Planning Board being present, call this meeting to order. First agenda item, Agenda Item A, approval of minutes from our November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Do we have a motion on?
A motion to approve the November fourteenth minutes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B. B one Committee Reports. Any of the members have any committee reports that they wish to make at this time?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
I'm all set as well, same here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so it's not necessarily a committee report, but am I correct that in just a few days, the new elementary school will be open and all the students will be there?
Actually, I think that was last Wednesday.
Oh, they're already back, all right, I thought they were, okay, so.
Yes, the Trahan School closed for winter break and did not reopen.
Excellent, okay, so we have our new elementary school, so good. All right, that moves us to B two, which is Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the interest of time and respect for the several applicants who are here and have been waiting a little extra time, I would like to table my report until after the public hearing, it's just so we're not having these folks here, I'm too long.
No problem, we'll get back to it at the end. Moving to Agenda Item B three, Adjustments for the two thousand and twenty-three meeting calendar. Have all the members seen the suggested change to the meeting calendar and the reason why?
Yep.
Yes.
Everybody's fine with it?
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion to change.
Motion to update the calendar as amended.
All right, so we have a motion made in.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, and just so everybody knows, that change is our June meetings will now be June twelfth and June twenty-sixth. All right, takes care of that. Moving on to Agenda Item B four, One Twenty Lumber Lane Special Permit Extension. Once you get settled, if you just give your name, names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, everyone. It's the Board. My name is Paul Ross, One Twenty Lumber Lane.
Joe Phelan, One Twenty Lumber Lane.
We're here for a permit extension, it's a special use permit which was granted in February of two thousand and twenty. It expires by its.
Sorry, I'm just having trouble hearing you guys, I'm just gonna move this mic over here, so I can hear you guys better on here, too.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you guys.
I'll jump back, I'm Paul Ross for One Twenty Lumber Lane, and with me is my client.
Joe Phelan, One Twenty Lumber Lane.
We're here just for a permit extension, this is a special permit to define the uses allowed at One Twenty Lumber Lane, which was granted in February of two thousand and twenty. It expires by its terms in February of two thousand and twenty-three, so we're here to request a three-year extension. I can give you a brief synopsis of what we're doing to comply with the terms of the permit, if the Board so desires.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
So, a couple of major points within the permit. One was compliance with the building permit, there have been numerous tenant fit-ups that were done by prior tenants without building permits, we've been going through a process on that. We submitted you a table that shows the status of that process. As you'll see, anything in yellow is something we've already brought into compliance. There's a few items in gray that are units that are under construction now, permits have been issued. Units in green are still being worked on by the architect. So we're down to five units, three units in construction, two units in design, and then we have one more building to get to, which is Building One. So that's proceeding fairly well. We've also, we have a tenant fit-up process worked out with the building department, where new tenants will be filing tenant fit-up plans regardless of whether or not they actually have construction work, and that'll allow the building department and the meeting of the planning board to review the uses of the units as well as any construction work that may or may not happen in those units going forward. So we've done a few of those, the landlord's overseeing that process, but the tenant's actually making those submittals, which seems to work better for Mr. Bertmasi. I want to also point out that in terms of sprinkler coverage, that was one of the points the Board made in two thousand and twenty. The property is a hundred percent covered with sprinklers. We've been submitting new plans as construction changes, so there've been several submittals to the town on that. So the plans are being updated as we go through the units. We're currently, our permit compliance deadline right now is April first. Let's try to get all of these units into compliance. We are pretty close, we have one unit where the tenant can't vacate. Most of the units that we've worked on, we've needed the tenant to move out, which is challenging. One of those units, tenant can't get out until April first. And then we still have Building One to tackle as well, so we may be before you asking for more time on the permit compliance. But right now, we don't know the full scope of that, so we're limiting tonight's request just to the extension of the overall permit. And that's all I have for you this evening, if you have any questions.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Fertaglia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I commend you on what you've got done so far, I know it's a long, long process to get people in and out. So let me ask you a couple of questions, how many units are in Building One?
I think there's eight.
Eight, okay. So eight in the four or five you have left in the gray here, right, so.
Right, yep.
You know, I have no problem willing to allow the extension. And all you guys have worked diligently to get to this point. Mr. Phelan's been always been a stand-up guy and always willing to do the right thing in his business, and I commend you for that, Mr. Phelan. So with that being said, I don't have a problem with the three-year extension at all.
All right, Mr. Delfi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of quick questions, so basically, just rough math, there's like the eight units in Building One and then five additional units that still need to be completed, is that?
That's correct.
In process at various levels, and I realize it's difficult once things are built to kind of backtrack and get back to the starting point there and, you know, and to get into compliance. And I think it's been less than two years where you've been able to kind of get from where you were to where you are now. And I was just curious why the three-year number, it seems like a little bit of a long time to.
To be clear, we're here not talking about an extension for permit compliance. The three years is for the overall special permit, so every three years, the permit expires and we have to come back before you're asking to extend the overall special permit. But within that special permit, there's a requirement to make sure all these units are compliant with the building code.
Right.
So there's a subtask, I'll say, to the overall special permit.
Okay, okay.
All right, in that light, I'm perfectly okay with the three-year extension. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's, Mr. Chairman, you're up.
Having not been a member of the planning board in two thousand and twenty, I just wanted to know if you could just fill me in on what's your original plan as far as what you were going for, and then it sounds like this was a roadblock as far as bringing all of these existing units into compliance, is that correct?
The original special permit was really to define uses allowable at the property, and there was a whole process to define what those were. And, but as part of that, the planning board wanted us to meet certain other requirements, sprinkler coverage, some safety egress issues, to just confirm that those were up to date, because those are life safety issues. And then also to address this issue about prior tenants who had done construction work, building a small office or something like that, or a mezzanine office without a permit, so that was the, that's this building permit compliance piece of it. But the overall permit that we're trying to extend tonight was really about special uses allowable at the site.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so my only, well, I guess there's two. One, you know, when we've been doing these lately, we, you know, we've typically tried to reduce the time before you come back to see us again. Yes, you could have three years, and it's not that you guys may not need the three years, but when we keep it a little shorter, then we get the check-ins and we know how things are going. When we just give the blanket three, a lot of times, we don't see anybody for three years. You know, and then all of a sudden, you're gonna, you know, not you, but you come back in, now you need another extension, and we're wondering what's been going on for three years. Whereas, you know, when we've done it with a lot of these, we've done them for a year and then sort of checked back in. So at this point, it's been three years. I'd be more inclined to do the one-year extension so that we can have the check-in, so we know where things are, especially knowing that you have, you know, a deadline for the compliance that's coming up. So you'd be back in again possibly anyways, asking for that extension. So my other suggestion is, at this point, making that extension coincide with this for February. So we're giving you a little more time on the compliance now, and now they'll be on the same timetable for checking back in. That way, you don't have to bring him back in in a few months, you know, to be here, but you will bring, you know, both of you back in maybe in a year, if that's necessary. But at least then we're keeping up, and it's consistent with what we've been doing with everybody else. Because, you know, we don't want the permit sitting out there forever without movement. And, you know, obviously, you've got your updates with, you know, where you are and everything, but obviously, you know, perhaps in, you know, in a year's time, we'll have some updates on Building One at that point as well. And, you know, potentially, you're all set in a year, great, if not, you know, we revisit it then. But at least at that point, we're being more consistent with what we've done with everybody else, which is, you know, ask them to come back and just check in with us so these things don't float forever before we know what's going on. So I don't know if the other members, you know, are inclined in the same way, or if you are, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I like the idea, actually, to do a periodic check-in, you know what I mean? Just so that we kind of have our finger on the pulse a little bit, just to make sure that there's a, you know, just a progress report, basically, in some fashion, you know, with the three-year extension and, but with, they'd say, an annual progress report.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
I also think that the one-year check-in is a good idea. I like to keep the town business moving, doesn't leave the neighbors in suspense.
Mr. Fertaglia?
You know, I know this project's been going on for a long time, I would rather see a two-year extension, but maybe not three, but I'm willing to do a one, that's amiable to you guys, I mean, as well, I mean, I think a one was, and getting a check-in is also a good thing as well, but.
All right, so is everybody okay with the, making the compliance coincide with this as well?
Yeah.
So that'll give you the extension on compliance from April to February. That way, we're dealing with everything in one meeting, if we have to deal with it at all. Does that work?
We anticipated coming back to you before April anyway.
It sounded that way, so I figured it made sense to give you, you know, this'll give you a little bit of time. But if you're gonna be coming back, if you have to come back in February, and you have to come back in for one or both, at least now, it's on the same timetable, and we're not working on different, you know, different things. Well, it's February next month, right?
No, no, about a year from.
A year from, you guys came in now because your deadline is February, and you didn't want to leave it till the last minute, I presume?
We'll tackle both extensions, both extensions until February of two thousand and twenty-four, that's what we're proposing. This used special permit was a little bit different, I think, than some of the other ones, where it was to govern the uses allowable at the property. So I think that's probably why it was initially done as a three-year special permit.
Which is fine, but it goes to the same thing, we just changed the entire zoning, and we made changes, and if the idea is to preserve what's allowed, we also don't want that running forever because we changed it. So, you know, again, the same thing on the check-ins, I don't see it as a, you know, because, you know, I'd rather see movement, and then if somebody asks, well, why is this still able to do that? Okay, because we know it's been going on, they've been working their way towards, you know, an endpoint. It's an endpoint they would have been at a long time ago if these things hadn't existed, but they're diligently working on them. That's the justification for, you know, for continuing it along. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you very much. One other question, if we are able to finish off Building One, can we make a preliminary, premature filing, will you guys just show them that we're done? I don't know if you want that administratively or not, if we're done before.
I think administratively, I mean, I don't think you need to come back.
Okay, great.
Unless, unless you want them to come back in here, but as long as they give you what you need in the office, I don't see the need to come back before us.
I don't think there's anything in the special permit conditions that indicates you have to come back, so as long as everything's wrapped up with the building commissioner, if you want to kind of do a final correspondence for the file, you can call it closed.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
All right, so with that, what is the pleasure of the Board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the special permit extension for one year from this February to coincide with the conditions we discussed earlier.
Okay, so we have a extension, special permit extension, and an extension to the compliance date. And that compliance date will now be the same date as the special permit extension, okay, good enough.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C. This is Seventeen Twenty-One Main Street, used special permit. This one was gonna be on our December twelfth meeting, so it hasn't been opened yet, so do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have anyone here for Seventeen Twenty-One Main Street?
Yes.
All right, once you get settled, if you could just give your name for the record, the floor is yours.
My name is Rhonda Corey, and I'm the owner of the business at Seventeen Twenty-One Main Street, Unit Three.
Is there more?
Was there a question?
Well, do you want to tell us what it is you want to do and why you're here?
We, in September, we took the lease on the property and opened a doggy daycare business as a bright. Did not require a special permit for that use. We did go through the building department to change from either a retail or general business use to a pet services, which is defined in the code now. However, we're now, before you guys, requesting a special permit for a kennel license, which would allow overnight boarding at that location.
Okay. All right, we'll start with Mr. Chairman.
I reviewed the plan and the application, looks to me like everything's in compliance. We received a number of emails in support of this, so I have no questions for the applicant.
All right, Mr. Fertaglia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rhonda, were you working today?
Yes.
Okay, I was in the blue pickup. You know, I should have came in, I had my dog in the car, I'm like, well, I should come in and just identify who I am out there, but I was reviewing the site. So with that being said, you know, I'm a dog owner and I'm a dog lover, so I just have a couple of questions regarding the actual plaza. Now, to the left of you, looking at your building to the left, are those occupied by somebody?
Yes, Unit One is the furthest back from Main Street, Unit One and Two are combined.
Okay.
And there is an occupant in there, it's a fitness studio.
Okay.
I don't know the name of the business, but it is operating.
And then to the right is occupied as well, right?
To the right is recently occupied, Units Three, which is me, and Four used to be combined for the Milestones Daycare Center.
Okay.
So those two units have been separated, and Unit Four next to me is a business that's seeking approval for their.
I got you, okay. So my question is, when you're looking to do the overnight boarding, what time does that overnight boarding start? I'm just curious.
Well, because it's already a daycare in operation, call it twenty-four hours. Right now, the daycare portion, the first drop-off for daycare animals is seven A M.
Okay.
Last pickup is six P M, so anyone staying to board overnight, they'll just be there overnight.
Okay, so they'll be there all day, overnight and so forth and so on, okay.
Correct.
So my only question to you was, there's nobody gonna be there staying overnight from your staff, correct?
Correct, we're not allowed to have it overnight.
Right, you just have cameras and so forth there, right?
We have cameras, yes.
Okay.
Indoors and outdoors, just to be specific.
So if there was a situation where a dog was barking and barking and barking, you'd be able to hear that through your cameras and so forth?
Yeah, it's motion detectors and sound.
Okay, all right. My only question was that somebody in the studio overnight wouldn't be causing problems for the neighbors on either side of you, of you as a rental, you know, or whatever, so. But, you know, if you are able to hear that and see that, then I have no problem with that at all.
Yeah, I would also add that, you know, we walked to the residential neighborhood, which is a U-shaped road that has butts, and when the dogs are barking, you can't really hear it very far, it's a nice solid building, and there's a block retaining wall behind the premises that seems to dampen it, as well as the trees in the areas seem to absorb some of the.
My only concern was if someone's, you know, occupying the studios next to you and the dog is barking from six to eight, and while people are there, that you'd maybe, but you, I'm sure you'd be on top of that, if something was happening, you'd be responding, so. So with that, I'm all set, and I wish you luck, so, thank you.
All right, Mr. Delfi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On top of Mr. Fertaglia's questions here, I was curious, like, how many overnight kennels, overnight boards do you have there?
The daycare license is for fifteen animals on the premises at a time, so we wouldn't exceed that number anyway, whether they were overnight or on premises just for daycare.
Okay.
We haven't set up the facility for overnight, I didn't want to invest in that equipment until finishing up with the application.
So it'd be something in the neighborhood of fifteen is what you're looking for, fifteen potential overnights?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any problem at all with it, I wish you best luck down there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just, what are your hours of operation as far as, what time does your staff leave in the evening? Is that six o'clock, or is it later than that?
Right now, the animals, they're picked up by six o'clock is the last pickup, and then there's just cleaning time, so. Right now, because there's no overnight boarding, could be a half hour.
Okay, I'll change my question then. If in fact you have overnight boarding, what time would your staff leave?
Okay, that question. What I project is that probably ten to eleven P M. I don't know if the no overnight has a cutoff time as far as employees being on the premises, or that I wasn't sure of, so.
So my understanding is that this is something you could confer with the building commissioner about, there are just not to be any sleeping quarters for humans in the space? So, I mean, we have restaurants that close at eleven o'clock, and, you know, their crews are cleaning up before they leave, so I have to imagine, and again, confirm with the building commissioner, but my understanding is there just not supposed to be accommodations for the humans overnight. And as far as when the last person shuts off the lights, I think that's gonna be down to your tenant fit-up permit with the building commissioner.
Okay.
So I mean, probably somewhere in there, you have a cutoff time for, you know, when they should be closed, but.
Ten or eleven, a tenant would leave, and then the monitoring would be in place overnight.
Yeah, the reason I asked was, it was just an extension of Mr. Fertaglia's question in terms of the amount of time where they might be unattended and you'd have to come back if something happened, is a little smaller than the six o'clock time.
Right.
Of when, you know, people aren't coming to pick up anymore, but there's still somebody around, and in this case, they'll be around for several hours.
Yes.
So that window's tighter.
The attendant leaves maybe ten or eleven, I haven't figured that out yet, and then the morning attendant will be there at six A M setting up.
Okay, so.
Can I ask one more question, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Thank you. I guess, what, with all your surveillance equipment and so on and so forth, if you did hear a lot of barking, or you saw some dogs loose from a cage or whatever, what would a typical response like that look like? I mean, is that something that someone that's gonna be able to go there and take care of a problem, or a potential problem?
We live on Pompret Road, which is less than two miles from the facility, so I'd just be up and go check it out as needed.
Thank you.
More questions?
I have just a couple of quick questions. Just in extreme weather conditions, extreme heat during the summer, extreme cold, do you have a Wi-Fi connected thermostat, so you would get an alert if you lost heat or cooling?
No, we don't have that at the facility.
Okay.
In fact, I'm not sure it's even programmable, oh no, it is programmable, I just haven't done that.
Okay, and if power were to go out, would you, would you, do you have a protocol for that?
We do. We plan to, for inclement weather, we'll follow the school systems guidelines, whether it's a snow day, or they close early, or whatever. So we decided to use that since it's, you know, something good to tag, too. And if power goes out, then we will have everybody come pick up their animals, because there won't be any lights in there. There are windows only on the front, and then because of the grade, the back, there's no natural light, so it really is dark at the back of the room if there's no light in there.
Okay, so while this really doesn't fall within our purview, but I assume people boarding their animals are away, so you would have to have an emergency contact.
Yes.
That's available to pick them up in case of a situation like that.
Yeah, we have files on all of the daycare animals already, which it's really not regulated, but the protocol is to have an emergency vet, which is part of the kennel license application with Animal Control. And we have, you know, secondary contact information for all the animals there, as well as their vaccinations and medical histories on file, if they're on the premises.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I think the only one for me then after that is, and again, on top of Mr. Fertaglia's comment, that if we put a condition in the permit that just, in the event that noise becomes an issue, that we can just revisit it with you. Otherwise, I have no issue beyond that. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll open it up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, as Mr. Chamber mentioned earlier, we did get a number of supporting emails, letters, whatnot, for the applicant's proposal, so those are all made part of the record, I'm not gonna read them. So with that, I'll bring it back to the Board, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, and as to the used special permit, what's the pleasure of the Board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the used special permit at Seventeen Twenty-One Main Street, with the caveat that in the event there's an issue with noise, that we can bring it back here.
All right.
I'm in second.
All right, and that's for the fifteen units, just so we have the number in there, okay? All right, motion made in seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item D, Eight Border Road Family Suite Special Permit. We haven't opened this either, right? Okay, have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once you're settled, if you could just give your names for the record, the floor is yours.
My name is Jane Markey, and I'm a soft builder.
Gavin Oshkins, I'm the owner of Open Builders, I'm the contractor for the project, and we're applying for a family suite permit. It's about seven hundred and seventy-five square foot unfinished basement that we're gonna make into a one-bedroom family suite.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Delfi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so I assume that the house right now is tied into sewer, or about to be?
Correct.
Okay. And you have less than the seven, than the one thousand square feet required? And if there are any egress issues or whatever, I'm sure those will be addressed by the building department? Is it a split, did you say?
No, it's not a split, but there's a separate entrance, there's an egress in the back, not, yeah, out the back, not front.
And it's upstairs, maybe they go to the upstairs type thing?
That would be the second, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't have any problems with it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chamber?
I just have a question, I was looking at just the Zillow of the property, and I was having a hard time figuring out how, where the attic space sits in relation to the basement as far as the two egresses, because I saw on the permit, you're gonna add a slider, but I see, I do see a double-door egress from the basement suite. So it was just, if you could just walk me through how the flow ties together from the two egresses?
Yeah, so the attic would be a separate, that's just a renovation for the homeowners to have an office up in the attic. For the basement, there is a set of doors that will be sliders, that go out the back of the house, and then there's a set of stairs that come up to the kitchen, and then where the kitchen is the front entrance.
Okay, so, I don't know if you can see, I get the plane here, so I see these double doors, is that what will be the sliders?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the rear of the house.
Because they're shown as swing doors, so that threw me off, sliders, obviously.
Yeah, I'm sure, it would either be a slider or a patio doors.
Okay, so where will the stairs be?
Stairs are currently on the, kind of the top right of that drum, which would be the front of the house. That, a little bit to the right, would, those go upstairs from there.
So this way?
Down, from the top down, if that makes sense, I can show you if that would be easier.
Okay.
Can I show you?
Yeah, please.
So these are the stairs here, they go right up here, and then that door actually.
Okay, so you go through this door, and then you turn around, and you go up the stairs?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, those were my only questions. Those were my only questions. Thank you.
Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all in favor of family suites. It says your mother's going to be taking over the. Oh, you are? Okay, all right, great. All right, so that's fine. And, you know, all these plans we approve at the planning board, but the building inspector is the last person that will be okaying everything when he gets to the site and make sure everything's on the up and up and so forth and so on. With that, I'm all set.
Chair is all set as well. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Close the public hearing?
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the family suite special permit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the family suite permit.
All right. Motion made in second. It all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Good luck.
Moves us on to agenda item E, which is seven seventy Main Street. Site plan review, land disturbance permit continued. Well, it's not really continued, we're going to open it. So, a motion to waive the public reading? A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once you guys are all set and settled in, just give your names for the record and the floor is yours.
If you want to speak and present, you can grab that.
Okay.
Sounds like it works.
Good evening. My name is Ben Osgood of Ranger Engineering Group, Salem, Hampshire. Here for Butler, Butler School LLC. Purchased this property on seven seven, seven seventy Main Street. The property is located across from Earl and Ave. Adjacent to, I think, the Municipal Credit Union, which is a fairly new building. It's a, just a little over an acre, forty-five thousand square feet. It's a single-family dwelling unit on there now. Has a driveway access on Main Street. And pretty much open lot. I've kind of penciled in the tree line here. And what we're here today for is to develop the lot with a ten thousand square foot daycare, site plan review. So this is the proposed layout. Ten thousand square foot building placed towards the back of the lot. We have forty-one parking spaces accessing on Main Street right across from Earl and Ave. Forty-one parking spaces meets the requirement of the bylaw. Will need all the setbacks on the building. The green area is what would be open space, grass or mulch, plantings. And as I said, forty-one parking spaces, they're all nineteen and a half by, nine and a half by eighteen and a half. Ileways are minimum twenty-four feet wide. This one here is thirty-four feet and this one here is twenty-seven. So there's plenty of circulation. Dumpster is located here. We do have parking spaces that are located five feet from the property line. Going to be requesting a waiver to the offset requirement of ten feet for the parking spaces. But the building meets all the offset requirements. We'll kind of move along pretty quick just to, I'm sure the board has reviewed the plans. Just to give you just a basic overview. This is the drainage utility plan. We're capturing the storm water in a subsurface structure here under the parking lot. We have four catch basins that capture that water. There's also a long, narrow subsurface detention area right back that will capture roof runoff and some of the runoff from the, I guess this would be the west side. We provide pre-treatment with catch basin, deep-some catch basins, oil grit separators, and then we infiltrate a good deal of the water. Drainage system is designed, it infiltrates the two-year storm, which is over two and a half inches of rain. So we meet all the treatment requirements by infiltration, treating the storm water, infiltrating it. And that's how we meet the phosphorus and nitrogen removal requirements. The site is serviced by municipal sewer. The existing utilities will be removed from the house. A new sewer line will connect into the sewer line that runs across the front of the property to extend to the building. There's a grease trap that will also be installed. There is a small kitchen here, so we have an exterior grease trap for kitchen waste. Water line would be a new, it's actually an eight-inch water line up here to a hydrant branch. It'd be a hydrant located in a island here in the front. Then there'd be a six-inch fire line and a one-inch domestic water line. Underground electric connects with a pole out front. And gases in the roadway that would actually be extended to the property as well. Let's see. We have a proposed landscape plan. The requirement is to have five percent of the area is landscape. We have approximately ten percent. These green areas, these dark green spots are trees that we would plant. Ornamental trees along the side of the parking lot, mulch areas. This would be the playground area, which is actually mulch. And then we propose a row of arborvitae's out in the back here. There is a residential zone area behind this. Property is adjacent. Like I said, this is the credit union. They're actually developed right up to our property line. And this is a daycare facility, a small daycare facility on the east side. But we do propose to leave the landscape buffer along the parking lot with some ornamental trees and some ground covers along that area. Lastly, we have typical architectural plans. The north elevation is the front elevation. I think it's just a colonial-looking building with a, it's a, it's a slope roof. There's actually an area inside that's depressed and that's where the utilities would be located, the air conditioning units. And so they wouldn't be visible from the roadway. Site has a walkway around it. Basically, coming to all the different classrooms have doors, fire doors, so there's a walkway around the building. Playground in the back would be fenced and actually the fencing around three sides of the, the building would kind of keep it so kids wouldn't be able to leave the classroom and get off of the site of the facility. We've run turning plans for the fire department and trash truck, they're in your packet. I didn't bother just printing them out, but they had plenty of room to turn. Into the engineering department, they've done a review and we have a couple minor issues left. And then there are a couple of waivers, as I mentioned, the parking waiver. Loading space, there's no loading, delivery required here, so we're asking for a waiver of the loading space. And lastly, the engineer brought up, it's no storage and the amount of parking we have and a couple of these spaces he feels be difficult to get in and out. So I think we're going to ask for a waiver to reduce the number of spaces by two, just to mark these out as snow storage. It could be there as a reserved space in the summertime if somebody really needed to park there. Mark them as snow storage and just line them out so they weren't really parking spaces. So, that's all I have. Any other questions?
We'll start with Mr. Fattalia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a couple of questions for you. So you designed the plan, we needing a waiver from the, for parking spaces coming in, right? So in the event you didn't get the waiver from us, what's the new plan going to be? You're going to make the building smaller because you can't reduce the number of parking spaces?
Well, I was pretty confident that we might get the waiver, just the, well, the adjacent property is built right up to the property line. They have, they're, they're zero. They may be, they may be four. You know, I really, if you look on our existing conditions plan, right here there's a wall. When they built the credit union, the wall is actually by survey, the base is on our property. So, we don't need to put a wall here because it's going to fill up against the wall that they.
Yeah, I know exactly where I'm at, sir.
You know, their parking spaces are five feet, but I just figured we'd request the same waiver.
I understand and I seen the plans and I'm like, well, you know, it's, it kind of irritates me that people, not just yourself, but others as well, come in with the intention of hoping that we would give them a waiver. You know, and I'm like, why can't, not, not you in particular, but why can't people doing these designs and so forth, make it to code like it should be and then from there, you know, make the building whatever size it has to be. You know, so, nothing against you or the, or the project, but it just seems like that we get those waivers requests and I'm like, why can't people just design it accordingly and we don't need a waiver? You know, so, I mean, so that was, you know, one, one thing I picked up on and, and so forth and so on. So I seen you have a landscaping plan with trees on the front there.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that you're not going to impede the sightlines as you come out of the, out of the driveway. I was, I was there today and I seen the, the property and you have good, great sightlines now.
Right.
You know, so as long as you're going to put something that's not going to impede sightlines, then I, then I'm fine with the, with the landscaping.
Yeah, that's exactly why we didn't plant a lot of shrubs around the entranceway and we just went with some street trees set back. I mean, they're not going to impede any of the sightlines.
Okay.
Down there.
I did see the fire department turnaround you have, but I haven't seen anything from the fire department itself as far as approving that. Was that in there? Unless I missed it? From the, I know there's paperwork in there and from the preliminary plan, but go ahead.
Their fire department didn't submit any further comments. As far as they're concerned, you know, it shows on paper that it works, but generally speaking, the fire captain reserves the right to get a ladder truck out there before final grant. Curbing goes in to ensure that what's on paper works practically as well.
Yeah. Usually we get a letter saying, yeah, it appears to be, you know, in compliance and it appears to work. They reserve the right to come back with a fire truck and make sure it does, but I didn't see that in there because we want to make sure that, you know, fire is, is adequately allowed to get through the parking lot, so.
I think at some point he sent an email of the turning radiuses.
I did see the letter from him explaining to you as far as what was required and so forth and so on, but. So now are you, I'll just, one more question and I'll let my colleagues go on, but sprinklers are going to be in the building?
Yes.
Okay. And one eighty-seven, is that the correct number of kids that are, you're going to, wow.
I looked it up in the state. It's, it's only eighty-five square feet per.
Yeah. It just seemed like a big number when I was looking at it originally. I'm like, let me just check that for sure. That's.
Me too.
I'm like, but hey, if it works, it works. But with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Let my colleagues go on and yourself as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And some of this, I'm just not sure if, because you did submit quite an extensive plan package, but you referenced that there's an existing retaining wall bordering the credit union side of the property. What's going to, my concern, I guess, having once been a father of young children in the play areas and the site in general, you know, I'm assuming that the doors will have crash bars and so an enterprising young person could probably get outside without supervision. What's to keep them from getting away?
The entire area, so fence starts here, comes around, these sidewalks all have a full-foot fence around. There's a gate there and then this is the playground. There's a gate here. So it, all the doorways except for right out front, they'd have to go through a lobby or a common space. Those doorways all go to a fenced area.
Okay. And then my other question, which I picked up on something very similar to Mr. Fattalia, which is the, having the parking spaces within five feet. And Ms. Lowry, you know, a rookie, so what, what exactly is the regulation that's driving the forty-one spaces?
That's in the use table as defined by the zoning bylaw and that you particularly use requires a certain number of spaces. It's detailed right on the plan. I think it's, off the top of my head, I think it's like one and a half per child plus the maximum number of staff on, on the highest shift. So it's, it's.
One per staff.
Seventeen, right?
One per eight students.
That's what it is, one per eight, yeah.
Okay. So basically, just spitballing, you know, Mr. Fattalia said you could continually shrink the building. You could also reduce the number of students to meet it. So I'm not, I'm not as concerned with the credit union side, but you are abutting at what I would assume could be a competitor, the, I forget what the name, I know it's M S L A Learning Academy.
Listen, the other side, an empty space.
No. So is it, would it be possible to make this work and at least get the profit buffer on that one side?
I can look at that. It may, it may work.
Okay. And then I don't see anything detailed here. I know you mentioned a fire hydrant on one of the sort of parking lot islands there.
Right here.
Will there be, do we require any protection for that, like ballards or anything? Because, you know, a little snowstorm, clouds coming through.
We do show ballards.
You do? Okay.
If the fire department wants a, within a hundred feet, they want a hydrant that they can connect the exterior of the fire sprinkler system.
Understood. Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of quick questions. From my perspective, I don't have a problem with the, with the, with the waivers. I, I think it's consistent with the, with, you know, with everything else that's going on with your abutters there. It's not a drastic departure from, from, from your next owner there, so I think we're, I'm pretty much okay with that. I, I know you had mentioned your catch basins in, in the parking area. Now, are they, do they, they don't connect to the town storm drain system?
No.
So everything has to drain off into the system and maybe eventually, if it's an overflow situation, it's going to go to the retention area that you have on the back.
Right.
That you talked about.
The, the way the site drains right now, these are the tow pole lines. You know, we're three or four feet higher up here than we are here. So right now, everything flows out here. I think it's, is it old Boston Road out here?
Yes.
It flows, there, there's a culvert under Old Boston Road where it eventually will go. It's a couple hundred feet down the road. So in the, what we're proposing is our overflow would come out in that corner. So we're just going to the woods and flow where it's going now. But nothing goes out in the street, nothing goes into the town system. We capture it. The main infiltration area is right here and it connects, connects together in a manhole here. This connects basically root water and then the overflow goes out.
So there's basically a manhole in the, in the playground area there?
Right.
In some capacity. Yeah, that, that would probably be a problem. I see a lot of, like, like how is that going to be protected? Or how are the kids going to be protected in a playground area to have a manhole and a manhole cover?
I, I would just say you put it down a little bit below and put mulch over it. You know, we do, we do that all the time, just put it down below the ground a little bit. It does have to be inspected periodically, a couple times a year per the stormwater, but you can just push the mulch away.
Well, another, another experience that I have is with a situation like that is that the mulch in those playgrounds has a tendency to kind of wash away or especially where it's on kind of the downflow of your drainage area, you're heading towards your, your retention area. The retention area appears to be off property though.
Our outlet depends on property. It just goes where it goes now. All of our, all of our stormwater stuff is buried on-site. And then we have a pipe out the back that just travels out the back of our property and then runs up to the Jason property.
Listen, and I, and I, and I know there's a huge demand for, for daycare space now. It's, it's, you know, people, everybody's trying to get back to work and, and I, and I think it's a great project. I'd just like to see. I, I don't see a lot of thought going into that playground in that, in that, in that overflow area. And, and part of the reason I say that, my, my wife is a director of a daycare in Burlington. And, and, and me being her husband, I've done a lot of repair work over there over the years. One of the most common things is replacing mulch in the playground.
Yep.
You know, probably just from getting, you know, chewed up by the kids, but I, I, I'm, I'd like to think about some, something that may retain, uh, or keep that mulch from kind of consistently washing out, um, in that corner, in that low corner, because you're talking about three feet. I mean, there are situations where you're gonna get a, you're gonna get a river going down.
The playground slopes upward from the building out and then it, there's a fence and then it slopes down beyond that.
Yeah, I, I've seen the fence, but the mulch just goes right through the chain link fence. Uh, I'm talking about something that might better retain, uh, the, um, you know, um, any, any, you know, particulates or, or mulch or whatever, to just keep it from constantly washing out. I think you'd be doing the tenant the favor to be quite honest with you.
We can talk about, we'll find out how, you know, what they, what they do to maintain the mulch. I honestly don't know. I do know it's a problem. Everybody had kids. We all had Swinsets and mulch. You gotta replace it and, um.
And it's definitely outside the purview of this board. I will say that. But I, but I think it's something that maybe, you know, for the benefit of the, of the, uh, of the applicant that, uh, um, that you may want to think about some, you know, protecting the kids from the, from the catch basin structure and, and doing something to retain the, um, the, you know, the playground material from washing out. Other than that, I'm very good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we hit on most of the stuff, so I'm gonna concentrate on, you've got the letter from the buil-, uh, building engineer? I mean, I'm sorry, from the town engineer? All right, so I counted one, two, three, four, five, six unresolved items and one that's half. I got, hold on a second, addressed, addressed, addressed. I'm not counting ones if he says they were addressed, but they need to change something on the plan just to clear it up. I mean, things that he hasn't gotten what he wants yet. Is that still ten? Cause I didn't have that many. I have twelve, pot of sixteen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, twenty-six.
Twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three.
All right, so add those. All right, so from those, do, do you have any comment on any of those at this point?
I can just address it real quick.
Yep.
Um, comment number two, they're asking about the hydrant. It is on the plan. I just think they saw it on the center of the board. It is labeled.
And then partial sixteen?
Sixteen, we just sort of, we showed a manhole coming in. There are restraps and the sewer service connects. He wants a D Y with a cleaner, so we'll change it to a D Y with a cleaner.
Eighteen?
There's a couple of pipe sizes we have to add on the plan. Let's have a note between the grid separators and the underground structure.
Twenty-one?
The site distance, we show a distance and it's just a drafting. We put the site distance just for clarity on the other side of the road. We put it, uh, you know, just to, uh, just to graphically show it. We showed it over here with the site distance. It's a thousand feet each direction. He wants it to start here and go that way, so we'll just have to change the location on the plan.
Uh, twenty-three?
Sidewalk, we'll just widen the sidewalk to five feet.
All right, so then we started to talk about twenty-four in the, kind of roundabout ways on the parking. Um, in looking at it, you know, I mean, I'm trying to envision so for, you know, for what you're really doing there. You've got the staff, obviously they're gonna be there, um, but the majority of the folks coming in are coming in for pickups. This, it's not long-term parking for folks who are gonna be there, you know?
Right.
So I'd be more inclined to losing the two spaces he referenced, um, and going so far as to remove the two on the right when you first come in. Cause they're the two most problematic in terms of where you, if you're in them for some reason, that you'd be backing out into, you know, folks coming in and out.
Yep.
Um, but only in that, you know, he's got an issue with, cause it rolls into the next one, which is snow storage.
Right.
If after removing those two spaces and changing them to, um, snow storage, if he's still uncomfortable, then I'd be, you know, I, I'd consider looking at that other space as well, because I feel like for what you're doing here, it's not gonna be, forty-one is probably excess of what's really going on there. So I'd rather make sure that snow storage is gonna be taken care of in this case than have extra spaces sitting around three sixty-five, because the snow is more likely to be a problem than inadequate parking on a daily basis. Especially since again, and this goes to Mr. Patalia's point, you're showing the forty-one. So you can put the forty-one in. In this case, I'm saying take them out. So, you know what I mean? Um, so, you know, that, in, in terms of number, that's kind of where I come down, because I think the snows are obviously more than likely, you know, we'll end up putting something in the permit too, that anything that isn't, you know, isn't gonna be able to be put on site, it's gonna have to be taken off-site. We do that with everybody when it sets, you know, when it gets tight like that. Um, so, you know, I guess anticipate that we're gonna put that condition in the permit. Um, as for the setbacks, I have no, I have no issue with the setbacks. They fit with what we've done before. And you're not abutting residents on either side, so I'm not nearly as worried about it because you've got one, you've got one neighbor who's already on top of you doing the same thing, so they shouldn't have any squawk about it. Um, and you've got, you've got commercial on the other side too, so I'm not, you know, I'm not concerned for setbacks. Again, because I don't really expect people to really be parking here very often. This isn't in and out, drop off, pick up. This isn't, you know, long-term multi-car parking. The most you're probably gonna have ninety percent of the time are people who work there.
Right.
Those are the cars that are gonna be on-site.
Ten o'clock in the morning, you've got seventeen cars in the parking lot. Cause everybody's.
Now, I know you, you, you had the, you had the ro, the, the rotation for the, um, for, for showing that the, the fire engine can get through. Is there any consideration of making the entire thing one-way?
I don't have a problem with that. I think it's gonna work that way.
I, I wonder if it wouldn't make sense to have the arrows on the ground and make it that way.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know. Anybody else has any issue with that?
No, that sounds pretty good.
I just feel like it, it, just for flow, direction and consistency, um, that it makes sense to come in, stay to the right, go around, come out the other way, you know, just, because you don't want people, you know, oh, well, there's a couple of cars that way. Let me go to the left side. Now you've got people crisscrossing, doing drop-offs and whatnot. I'd rather take the option away.
I think it makes sense. If you've got people dropping off, you're gonna want them all going the same way. Stop, drop off. There's a teacher there. The next car pulls up, they drop them off. So I don't have any problem doing that. I will add those to the plan.
All right, so let's get those that they go all the way around.
Right.
And obviously you're gonna, you know, you're just gonna, you're gonna have to take care of those things of the engineer's comments, uh, for the rest of it. And then we got, so that's twenty-six, twenty-eight.
Yeah, we'll just, we have to go through the notes. There's erosion and sedimentation, and I guess we use them interchangeably.
And then thirty-one, traffic assessment?
We actually have a draft I sent over to Alex. Um, it's not a final stamped version from our traffic engineer. It's TAP LLC. It was, had a family function on Friday and hasn't been able to get me the final draft, but it basically, we have that done and a draft's been submitted, so we'll work through that with the engineer.
Okay.
We're gonna have to go to Mass Highway, which kind of, you know.
That's thirteen, so.
Right, so that's part of that. Mass Highway is really gonna determine that, so, um, you know, if they want a traffic study, they're gonna ask for it. If they feel it's not warranted, then, you know, I don't know that the town will step up and say, you know, we want one of our own. I'm not sure, um, because I think all the, you know, it's Mass Highway. The lights belong to Mass Highway.
Yes.
So.
If I may, thank you. Um, I think the main idea, their motivation for requesting a traffic study from this point is because we're going from a single-family home to a business use. Um, and I think actually the traffic study may even help give context to reducing the parking by a certain number of spaces just to ensure that there's enough, um, snow storage on-site. And like, um, Mr. Osgood mentioned, the, um, the parking spots not to be constructed right now per the bylaw will be marked on the plan as reserved to be constructed if found necessary by the building commissioner or the board.
All right, and then the last one, thirty-three.
I added a note on sheet two. I mean, I, it does say it has to be done by a, um, person licensed in Tewksbury, so I'll just have to point that out again to them. So it's noted on the plan.
Yeah, for me, I'm just pointing them out because, you know, you gotta get it squared away with the town engineer. I just want to make sure that there wasn't anything on here that you have issue with, um, and it doesn't sound like you do, so.
No.
That's between you and the town engineer, as long as it's not a question of disagreement or, you know, you wanna not do something that they're asking you to do and then it becomes an issue for us. So as long as you have some plan for dealing with those, that's between you and the town engineer. Um, hopefully you can get those resolved between now and the next meeting, um, and, you know, we'll see where we are.
Yep.
All right, with that, I will open it up to the audience. If anyone has questions, comments or concerns, they can come up. Now, just one thing, because it was asked or pointed out to me, we're not gonna get into a back and forth of whether this should be a daycare. That's not a question for us to deal with. If you have questions or comments on what's presented, that's fine.
Yeah.
So just come on up. You gotta give your name and address for the record and then you can.
Yeah, you also.
Just gotta pull the mic back up there. There you go.
My name is Desiree Wickham. I am a co-founder of Main Street Learning Academy. We are next-door neighbors. We just wanted to have an idea of what this timeline is. Um.
You mean build-out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, just to, you know, we don't wanna squaw. Like you said, you know, we're in the same business and we should support each other. We're all in the same town. Um, but we have children to keep safe in a building with a project going on, with a big project going on next door, so.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll try to get you an answer, but knowing, understanding that the permit lasts as long as the permit lasts, so that's their main, that's their real timeframe. But if they have one that they can give on an idea, we appreciate it. Um, do you have a, a, a general idea?
Yeah. The plan, if everything goes well, is get the permit and probably start within thirty to sixty days after receiving the permit. And I will say, this, um, I do a lot of work for this firm. He has his own contracting arm and they will put up a fence around the property before they start. They'll put one of those temporary construction fences with a gate and they'll fence the area right in, because they don't want people coming in on their property. They don't want any problems, so.
And, and if you have it, just because it's part of the same question, is there an amount of time for the build-out ballpark?
I would estimate it's probably take six months. You know, this is something that could be open, you know, late next year, uh, late this year. You know, if, if everything.
About the time school starts?
Probably, yeah, a little, yeah. More towards, more towards the holidays, more towards Thanksgiving, Christmas. Cause it's about a six-month build-out.
All right, fair enough. Um, does that answer your question?
It gives me a better idea.
Did you have any other questions or you're all set?
Um, we're all set.
Okay, very good. Anyone else with any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, we'll get back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if you can maybe move forward on, any idea, if there's any plans? Uh, we're tearing the building down, obviously, right? Have you ever considered relocating the building and donating the building to the town of Tewksbury?
Subject hasn't come up.
Okay. I, um, I'm a big proponent of affordable housing in town and work on a, I work on another committee that does some, stuff like that. So I didn't know if the town may be interested in relocating the building and if you donated it to them for affordable housing, but I figured I would just throw that out there, so.
I'll mention it to them. I don't know. The, the problem with doing that sort of thing is it's usually timing.
Yep, absolutely.
It's, uh, developer wants to get rid of it right away and they don't wanna wait. The town usually has to go to a town meeting, allocate funds and so it becomes difficult to do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. All said and much, Jim.
All right, so, uh, what, bring it back again. What, what is the pleasure of the board? I see we have an opening at seven, is that right? Okay. So do we have a motion to continue this till seven PM on, uh, January twenty-third?
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, motion carries. We'll see you on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item F, Foster Lane, land disturbance permit. Do we have a motion to waive the public reading? So more, motion made. You have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, motion carries. Then we get, when you guys get all settled, just give your names for the record and the floor is yours.
I had a question about that last situation. Is it out of purview? I know one of the things we found very helpful on the school project was we had one phone contact from Consigliere Construction that, that his information was shared with all the neighbors. So was there any issue with dust or noise or, you know?
We can address it when he comes back in next time. That's the one I do.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dennis Greci. I'm an engineer with Andover Consultants with an office at One East River Place in Methuen. Uh, here tonight, uh, with the applicant, O'Brien Holmes. Kevin O'Brien is with us this evening. Uh, this project is before the board for a land disturbance permit. We're disturbing approximately sixty-three thousand square feet. The lot itself is a two-point-three acre undeveloped site located at the end of Foster Lane, which is currently an unimproved way. Again, the project would be for a proposed single-family house with associated lot grading, uh, and utilities servicing the lot. The sixty-three thousand square feet of disturbance, uh, we've broken it up on the board in front of me into two areas. Uh, the first area is approximately forty-six thousand square feet, which is the, uh, the construction of the home, uh, the driveway outside of the garage and also some wetland replication. Uh, and the other approximately seventeen thousand five hundred square feet would be the construction or the improvement of Foster Lane. The project, uh, was before the Conservation Commission, uh, at the end of twenty-twenty-two, and we did receive an order of conditions, again, for some wetland impacts, work from the buffer zone and also some wetland replication that we're providing as part of the, uh, project. The driveway from, uh, the beginning point all the way up into the garage will be porous pavement. Um, that will allow for the, uh, stormwater to infiltrate into the ground. That was, um, one of the criteria the Conservation Commission requested. Um, and we did receive on Friday afternoon, we received a comment letter, uh, prepared by the town engineer. Uh, Ms. Lauter sent us that, so there's five comments contained within, uh, Mr. Hardeman's letter. They're all very addressable. I'm happy to go through them one at a time if the, if the board wishes. Um, but again, they're all relatively minor comments at this point.
Unless any of the members need them to, if they're fine with complying with this, I can, you need to go through them. If it's all right, good. You don't need to go through them.
Okay. Um, so having said that, we're hoping to revise the plan as needed, address these comments, uh, get revised plans and documents to the board, hopefully in the next few weeks. Um, and if the board has any questions this evening, we'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Duffy.
I guess the only question that I, that I have is, um, um, are we, are you in the process of, of, um, of taking care of the engineer's comments? Like, where are you on that?
We received the comments, uh, late Friday afternoon, around four-thirty, um, so I actually didn't see them until Monday morning. Um, again, we reviewed the comments. They're all very addressable. We don't see any issues with, um, addressing them. As far as when we'll get to addressing them, it'll be within the next, you know, week. As far as when we'll get to addressing them, it'll be within the next week, Sunday.
Personally, I'm perfectly comfortable with, with the land disturbance permit issue, but I'm not sure about whether we want to approve that with the outstanding engineer's comments. That's how I would feel about that right now.
All set or what?
What's that?
You're all set or what?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Really, just the same thing. I think the, the plans show what you're doing, it looks good. But, you know, I'm kind of a trust-by-verify kind of person, so I would like to see the engineer's comments addressed as well.
Mr. Fritz, how are you?
Look, Mr. Chairman, can I ask you how far away the water service is for this property? I'm looking at the length of the driveway, and I'm saying, wow, if that's where they have to come in from the waters, it's pretty far distant.
We have a profile on the, probably approximate from that. Bear with me, so the water service.
What was the question again?
How far the water service is from the property?
The water service?
Yeah, for you to.
Water service, well, the water is at Dixon Avenue, which is approximately nine hundred feet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, almost a thousand square feet.
Oh, I got you, okay. Well, that's what I was looking at, the length of the driveway, and I'm like, if you have to run a water service from Diction Street all the way up, that's a pretty substantial distance, so, but.
And what about the sewer?
So there's a manhole right on the site, we'll be pumping to that manhole. So there will be a pump system that will pump to a.
No, you watch, grab the other microphone.
Oh, he was talking with Kevin.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought he was saying that wasn't working.
So one last question I have, any, any objections or any comments from the abutters for this, from this project?
There are none here this evening, as far as I know, and we didn't have any abutters. There was no objections throughout the conservation process.
Okay, I'll say that much, Jim, thank you.
I have no, I have no problem with this, I agree with everybody else, though. We'll give, you know, the two weeks to get your stuff straightened out with the town engineer. I'll make one suggestion, though, is that the quicker you get it in and confirm it's squared away, the less likely you come in here in a couple of weeks and we're still not done. So, you know, it's in your best interest to make sure you've got everything squared away before you come back, or we end up in the same situation again. So the sooner the better, that way you know you've got everything that he wants and you're not looking for anything else. That way, if you come back in next time and everything's squared away, more than likely, we can finish up the process. But really, that's going to be up to you and the town engineer to get on the same page, all right?
Absolutely, okay.
All right, so with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to present to the board.
Yeah, just give your name for the record, then pass them off if you don't mind.
David Plunkett, attorney with an office at four ninety-one Duddens Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Also a resident of the town of Tewksbury, living at two fifty-seventh Fifth Street, Tewksbury, Massachusetts. And I'm also here after talking with Joyce Terrace with forty-four Floyd Avenue. If I may hand this out, and then I'll give my presentation. Mr. Chairman, when I was talking with Joyce Terrace, she was one of the original plaintiffs in this case that the town has on record. I forwarded through Plan and Development, I forwarded the specific pages of our appellate brief that the appeals court incorporated and accepted in their determination. This was a case that started back in nineteen ninety-two. Actually, again, a lot of familiar names are here. My name, I was, it was my office. I argued the case before the three justice appeals panel that we prevailed. And we prevailed in that the court annulled the decision of the planning board. That planning board decision was back in April of nineteen ninety-two. And it's the same party involved. Mr. O'Brien was the applicant at that time. Mr. O'Brien was given a permit to develop his property, the Twist Lot. And we appealed, and we appealed for a very good reason. The Twist Lot was a stranger to the Wilbur Plan by which this Foster Lane was created. There is no right of Mr. O'Brien to utilize Foster Lane. That was the decision of the appeals court. Nothing has changed since then. We have all the same players involved. I, I did this case, we prevailed. Mr. O'Brien was the defendant in that case, and he lost the case. And we still have another plaintiff who's still living at forty-four Floyd Avenue. I ran for the planning board in April of nineteen ninety-five. And one of the main reasons that I ran was because of the circumstances that required these people to engage legal representation and have to go through this process to assert their rights. We presented to the board the fact that he didn't have right, and that is one of the major determinations of any permit granting authority, is to make a determination that the person that's coming before the board has the right to use the land, that they're claiming they have a right to do so to develop their property. Again, nothing has changed. If you look at the decision of the, of the appeals court, they adopted, it says specifically pages fourteen through thirty-six of the appellate brief. This is the appellate brief. The Plan and Development has the copies of the pages of our brief that sets off in detail the fact that there are no, no rights of a stranger to a parcel of land to utilize that land for their benefit. Plain and simple, plain and simple, nothing has changed. And amazingly, it's still all the same players involved. So Mr. O'Brien got the permit back in nineteen ninety-two, thirty, what was it, thirty-one years ago. And we got our final determination from the appeals court twenty-nine years ago. Same parcel, same lane, same law applies. You can't use somebody else's property, you can't use land that you have no right to. And the number-one determination of any permit granting board is to make that determination that that person that's before you can do what he says without impeding, impinging on the rights of others. And that's all, so I, I've submitted you the plan, that, I mean, I've submitted you that decision. That decision is on record here in the town hall. Town clerk has it. The decision that's on record at the town hall makes reference to this appellate brief from twenty-nine years ago. The pages of this brief that it makes reference to and incorporate in, Plan and Development has it. I emailed copies to Plan and Development, so this is not unknown to the town. This is something that, we went through it, and it would be unfair and unjust to try to put the burden again on people to assert their rights for the benefit of someone who does not have the rights they're asserting.
All right, so my understanding with the, with the land disturbance permit is it's either they're meeting what's required or not. Not, if they go to do more than that, then, you know, this is going to kick in. But as far as I understand it, and we can get confirmation from town council, try to get it before next meeting. But as I understand it with these, because we weren't originally, we didn't have to do these in the past, this, we picked this back up as. Twenty-nineteen. And my understanding with this is, is if they meet the requirements for the land disturbance permit, we only rule on the land disturbance permit. Anything beyond that isn't our purview if it's only the land disturbance permit that's in front of us.
The plan that was submitted shows the entire length of Foster Lane. So how can you give somebody a land disturbance permit to disturb land that there is a case that says he doesn't have the rights to use that land?
Ms. Louder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has already, as Attorney Plunkett let us know here, this is not new news. The town has this on file, the town clerk has it on file. As such, this was discussed with town council prior to the holidays, and he advised this board to move forward with processing the land disturbance permit as submitted, because as Mr. Chairman notes, this is for compliance for chapter nineteen of the general bylaws. And of note, there is a pending zoning board of appeals application. Party agreed that Mr. O'Brien has submitted with regards to the access issue, and town council has informed us that that is the avenue to have that argument, not here.
So, without getting a different, Ms. Plunkett, I understand, we have your, we have your submitting and your comments for tonight. We're not making a decision tonight anyways. If something changes between now and our next meeting, and we get some other, other comment from town council that tells us to act otherwise, we will. But as of right now, I have no choice but to operate under town council's guidance.
Is there anything here from town council? Because there's a difference between taking an application and voting on it and approving an application. Two major differences.
Well, I'll see if we clarify that, if there is a clarification between the, I, I don't think there is from what you've said to me, but if we could just get that clarified, we're not dealing with this again for two weeks. Or is it two weeks, whatever, is it two weeks? Yeah, it's two weeks. At which point, hopefully we'll have clarification. All I know is what I've been told in the past about dealing with these land disturbance permits as standalone issues when they come up. And I have no choice but what to do with town council advises us, lest I have to have that argument with town council about who's right and wrong. And like I said, at that point, if we're wrong, and it's in, it's, you have to go through the same process as always, which is, you know, you may feel is unfortunate for your client, but out of my hands once I've been given our direction from town council.
Well, if we could get, could we see a copy of that determination?
I spoke with town council in person, I'm happy to put something in writing tomorrow, once I speak with him again.
Okay, from town council?
We'll get that, so we'll have that for the record for next time.
For the clarification, this issue, I, I don't understand, the ZBA given a, a access variance over somebody else's land?
No, the access is going to be, the access is going to be part of the discussion with the zoning board of appeals application. The building commissioner has had some correspondence with Mr. O'Brien's attorney for further clarifications. But my point being is that the avenue for land disturbance is the only thing being discussed here, compliance with, you know, mass stormwater and chapter nineteen of our general bylaws. And again, I'm happy to, I, I have an appointment to see town council tomorrow anyway, so I can get further clarification from him and have him put it in writing.
And for clarification, is this application inclusive of disturbance of the area that's within the bounds of Foster Lane?
Yes, which is also partially town-owned.
No, it's, okay. Okay.
Rather than relitigate this in here, because I have, I have no way to make a different decision than the one I've just made. So until advised differently from town council, I gotta take it on the four corners of the, the land disturbance from their recommendation to us to make a decision. They're either meeting what's required to submit or not, and go from there. After that, it's going to be out of our hands unless I hear something different between now and our next meeting, all right? Okay, so with that, anyone else in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Dawn Bornstein. I'm an attorney, I represent Mr. O'Brien. I just wanted to, I'm glad Mr. Attorney Plunkett joined us tonight. I have some questions I'll ask him after the, after we're done with the board tonight. But I do want to note and confirm what the planner said, which is I have been contacted by the building inspector. The building inspector, in fact, has provided me with the same decision that Attorney Plunkett handed to the board and myself just before he spoke. So the town is definitely aware of this decision. I would just note that the decision is specific to the subdivision plan that was in issue thirty years ago, so. Mr. O'Brien had a subdivision plan approved, that was appealed. The court was specifically dealing with whether that subdivision plan approval should stand or not. I have some reasons to believe that the rights might be more expansive than the court covered thirty years ago, when they were only looking at a subdivision plan and not at this. Not for, not for discussion with this board, that's something I expect we'll discuss with the zoning board.
I think it's a crying shame, but I don't have a robe. So, like I said to Mr. Plunkett, we're not going to be able to litigate this here for that purpose. All I can do is I'm going to get the clarification from town council on what we're allowed to do or not. Where everybody goes after that is going to be up to the parties, and, you know, you make your arguments where they need to be made at that point. It's just this time it's not here. So we'll stick to the land disturbance permit, and we'll see if we can get clarification on the board's responsibility. And after that, you know, we'll all figure out where we go from there, all right?
Very good, thank you.
Good enough, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make your motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue this land disturbance permit until our next meeting. I'm not sure what time is available.
Seven fifteen available, so we will continue it to seven fifteen on the twenty-third. So we have a motion made, we have a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you. See you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to old biz, actually, you know, let's do the, the, uh, report first, then we'll go to old business. So back to B two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to start with the December ninth report from our previous packet that we didn't get to discuss. Some of it might be moot at this point, but I'll just keep going. So, prior to the scheduled December twelfth meeting, the board had asked for some proposed language to include future site plan approvals to discuss the possibility of capturing interim as-built with further cash guarantees to complete the, the final as-bills. And the language proposed, and I'll just read it for the record. Prior to occupancy, the applicant shall, shall at minimum submit an interim as-built plan showing all site features that have been installed to date, which includes, but is not limited to, underground and above-ground utilities, buildings, paved areas, walkways, landscaping, and sidewalks. If the app, the applicant is unable to submit a complete and final as-built plan at the time of occupancy, they shall submit an interim as-built as described above and a cash bond with the amount set by the planning board to ensure the one-hundred percent as-built is submitted within six months of occupancy. So that was workshopped with the building commissioner, town engineer, and I actually bounced it off one of our local developers, and I printed out the email for your benefit and left it at your seats here. It seems to be something that kind of works for everybody. It's not holding anybody to, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace at the time they're looking for occupancy, whether they're looking for it in the middle of winter or, you know, some other unexpected circumstance. Particularly granite curving is hard to come by, so some folks might not be able to get their sidewalks in all at once. So this is just kind of something I'm hoping is a win-win-win for the town staff, for the board, so they're not chasing stuff for years, and for the applicants, not experiencing any undue burdens. And again, the suggestion of having them do it within six months of occupancy should be able to carry folks who get occupancy in the middle of winter or at some other time to give them time to resolve things. And of course, if they're coming up on that six months real fast and something is still outstanding, then the board has that discretion to extend it if necessary, like they do with special permits or anything else. Anything else?
Any, no comments on that right now?
No, I'm quiet right now.
Okay, all right.
What's the next step?
The next step would be that a part of an upcoming site plan review, it could be something that the board votes to implement instead of the typical cash bond that we've been doing. The seven seventy Main Street site plan review application could be a first candidate if the applicant feels that they've had enough time to understand the implications. And Mr. Osgood, I think I spoke with him off the record about it, just on the phone, offhand, and it didn't seem to be anything that gave him pause. So it could just be the next application that comes in. I could put it in a review letter, you can see on, Mr. Johnson can see, on the January twenty-third agenda. We do have two new applications for site plan review. We could plan to introduce it to those two new ones, just to be completely clean slate, but otherwise, it's up to the board when they'd like to start implementing it.
Well, what I would say, just my recommendation. Well, what I would say, just my recommendations, that we put it out to the applicants who've already gotten in, because they did get in December, which... And if they have an issue with it, then we'll go with the old version if there's an objection. If not, we'll put it in. But otherwise, anyone who's coming in for the first time as of the new year, they'll be informed that it's going to go into any permit that's approved for them, if no one else objects.
With these regulations, right?
Yeah, if no one else objects.
I like that.
All right. So I just think it's fair, because those folks actually would've been in here starting, you know, in twenty-two, which predated what we originally said we were gonna look to try and implement it for twenty-three.
That works, that's fine.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
All right, next item, the M T community's presentation had happened. And that's still an ongoing conversation, not only in Tewksbury but across the state. So as that kinda progresses, I'll be giving you folks updates. But as of right now, it's interim compliance plans that we'll be handling, primarily the staff involved with boards as necessary. Next item, the affordable housing initiative, conversion of residential units from commercial that I proposed at the last time we met, November twenty-eighth. So at the last meeting in November twenty-eighth, I proposed the conversion of commercial units in mixed-use developments only to residential units by special permit on the condition that they be maintained as affordable in perpetuity. And at that time, the board requested that I follow up with some potential projects where that could become applicable. So if you'll flip the December twelfth planners report over, I put together a small table. For instance, nine forty-nine sixty Main Street has two commercial units that this could be applicable to. Fourteen eighteen has one, fourteen fifty-five has one, and so on. Again, the idea would be for this to be examined on a case-by-case basis to see if it truly fits with the aesthetic of the neighborhood and of the building itself. And the proposed bylaw language, I would recommend a new section as a part of the affordable housing provisions within the bylaw, Section eight point three. And I would recommend this as Section eight point three point ten. The planning board may grant by special permit the conversion of a previously permitted commercial unit in a mixed-use development to an affordable residential unit to be maintained in perpetuity. The board shall base its decision upon findings that the conversion will provide for improved practical use of the space and to lessen neighborhood impacts. So again, you know, this isn't just to be able to put residential units wherever folks want. This is going to be specifically limited to previously permitted mixed-use developments, primarily under the previous bylaw, to be able to allow for some practical use of some spaces that maybe just didn't end up fitting the bill from a commercial perspective.
So the only... Not that... It's not the language, it's more the background. Because the things that I anticipate, if we're gonna put in the zoning change to be ready to comment on are, one, we just did the bylaw, why are we making changes? That's the first thing. That's the one I expect first. Not so much a question, but more of a justification on this. One being the, you know, unused commercial units that people tend to sometimes complain about. That's one. But two, that this would be what the new bylaw would have allowed.
Correct.
Anyways, so if they came in for that project now, they'd be able to do it this way. So I don't feel... I mean, generally, you know what I mean? Like, because we had this conversation on one of the properties that we suggested they bring it back in instead of trying to use the old zoning to use the new zoning, because it might be more appropriate. That this fits more in line with what we're now using in zoning than what we got rid of.
Right.
So it's not so much a drastic change as much as an opportunity to sort of piggyback old into new.
Right, provide a path forward to bring old projects, kinda marry it with the new bylaw, but also understanding that the folks who brought the projects for mixed use under the old bylaw were constructing the commercial in order to construct the residential, which previously was not allowed, as we mentioned. And the other thing is, they were not held to a density cap at that point either. So, you know, without editorializing too much, the applicants got what they wanted. And, you know, some of them ended up blossoming into great commercial spaces. I know that there's a lot of occupancy at seven twenty-five Main Street and seven forty-five, but there's still, as we mentioned, a lot that are still empty. So I think that this isn't just a freebie to anybody who constructed the commercial in hopes that it could be residential one day, but really more providing them an opportunity to apply for a special permit to have this reviewed in a different way. And also noting that it would have to be maintained in perpetuity, so it stays on our subsidized housing inventory. So it's kind of a win-win where we're gonna possibly fill some empty spaces. And it's certainly not gonna, you know, give us any safe harbors, but really keeping us moving towards the progression of adding more affordable units as we add more residential in general.
So that as well, and then the other would be that this exhausts at ten. There are no other...
I did a cursory look of all of the previously permitted, excuse me, mixed-use developments that don't currently have occupancies. So like I mentioned specifically, I know that seven twenty-five Jerome Place, seven forty-five, those ones, I believe, are all occupied at this point. So I really tried to restrict it to ones that I either know are partially occupied or mostly empty to kinda look at it from there. And this would come in the form of a zoning bylaw amendment. And I completely hear what you're saying, because we're gonna have to move on to a couple more practical ones under today's report. But, you know, understanding that it was just amended, but I believe as Mr. Todd Johnson and the building commissioner and Mr. Sadwick have all said, it was just redone, but it's also a living document. And as we work with it, we're gonna find deficiencies or new pathways forward that can really help us.
So one concern, Mr. Chairman, Alex as well, is you have a ten thousand square foot.
Right.
So that's probably gonna be ten units, possibly. Being one thousand, one thousand square foot.
Right, if they were to come for the special permit and show what they planned to do. Yeah, that could be something that has to be looked at. But the other problem with that is, we'd have to make sure that there's adequate parking, because generally speaking, commercial spaces require more parking. So as long as you're not trying to turn that ten thousand square foot retail space into like twenty residential spaces, as long as it stays within the parking, because all these parking lots are all already... They're all pretty much constructed.
Right.
And we wouldn't be able to exceed that without issues. So, yeah, that would certainly be something that would be discussed.
But to Mr. Fratelli's point too, though, but people in answer to that also should get, but it's not by right.
Right, special parking, that would also be ten affordable units.
Well, yeah, so I mean...
And then the other ones being two thousand square foot, could be two more, two additional ones. So two and four, maybe. So it could be twenty units there.
Right, so it's definitely gonna be a case-by-case basis, looking to see what fits for the neighborhood, what fits for that particular building, and what's practicable as far as sewer capacity, parking capacity, and things like that, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, the... Do we have any projects? I know the old direct auto parts, probably like two thousand something Main Street. Do we have any projects in the pipeline that have commercial space planned in them, which may become vacant, that might also end up on this chart?
So that particular one is twenty-one thirty-one Main Street, and their proposed commercial unit, I believe, is two thousand square feet. So that could be one where like, I know they only have foundations in the ground at this point. But, yeah, I did count those.
So that could be two.
If everything about it works. And it could be that they come in and ask for two, and you guys are like, you know what? I think practically speaking, really only one makes sense. I mean, apartments can be two thousand square feet, but, you know what I mean? So it'll be a learning process and it'll be, you know, kind of an open discussion as to how we make that work.
Could be a one-on-one, too, one commercial, one residential.
Sure, sure, and yet maybe not foregoing all of the commercial.
And the other ones could be as well, so.
Yep.
Okay, so that takes care of that, huh? So that's everything from the December one.
From December twelfth, yes.
Plus leading into our current one, right?
Yes, okay, so for today's, just to start, I have been in discussions with the new owners of Eco Auto located at six twenty-three Main Street. The former Nissan dealership has offered to partner with the town as well as other local businesses to help getting more electric vehicle charging station infrastructure in the grounded different places. Al Salas, the owner, tells me that they are able to help secure eighty to a hundred percent reimbursement for the materials. So that's really exciting. And just to piggyback on that, the new Massachusetts Building Stretch Code was adopted last week. And that's something that the town has opted into through town meeting that's going to require electric vehicle infrastructure at single and two-family homes as well as multifamily residential developments. The technical guidance just came out on that, but that's something that's in the works. So kind of everything's, you know, moving towards green vehicles there. Not a lot to say, they're just something I want to let you guys know. Another one, twenty-four Pleasant Street. It was brought to my attention that there was an issue with the landscape plan where a tree that was meant to remain per the approved plan was removed. I have sent a letter to the property owner to get a... reach a path forward for that issue, remedying the landscape plan coming before the board, something to that effect. I haven't heard from them yet, but once I do, I'll let you folks know.
I would like to see them put a sycamore tree back to it, because that's what was taken out.
Right, yep.
In Elijah one.
Yes, yep, so we have the town engineer and the exiting DPW director input on this. And that was what was determined, yes. Just a couple of quick project updates. Eighteen sixty-six Main Street, La Vida Dolce, the construction is ongoing. I made a visit to the site a few weeks back to see some of the progress. And the inside is coming along really nicely. The outside actually is coming along nicely as well. And you'd never remember it was a bank. It's just looking really good in there. And I'm looking forward to having them part of the Tewksbury Business Community. They'll be coming to you folks in the next month or so for a signed special permit to expand on what they already have there. So you'll see that next month. Eight thirty-six Main Street, Berundi, had their kitchen plans approved by the health department. And they have their building permit in hand to start the exterior improvements as well as interior renovations. And this is gonna be another site, the former Maribella's Bakery. It'll be nice to see some new life breathed into there. And the owner intends to either renovate or more likely tear down the abandoned house that's there, because that was a part of the sale, was the two parcels. So that's either gonna be parking and office, who's to say? But whatever he does do, it'll likely have to come to the planning board. But Mr. Columbus is very excited to join us here in town. I'm looking forward to seeing what he does. Eleven ten Main Street, the former Crystal's General Store. This new business received their building permits and renovations are underway for a business called Art Gourmet. They will be opening a combined catering and retail store specializing in Brazilian food. So that's exciting. And just, you know, a special shout-out to two eleven Main Street in Wilmington. One of the more popular vendors at our community market over the summer was Code One Barbecue. And they just opened their premises in Wilmington. And I kind of consider them an honorary part of the Tewksbury Business Community. We had Selectman, Krappman, and a couple of other folks out there on their opening day last weekend. It was really nice. It is in that, I think it's called Wilmington Crossing, where the Casablanca and Savers and the Golden Ginger are.
Starbucks.
Yeah. So that's exciting for them.
My old Starbucks.
Your old Starbucks, yes.
My new Starbucks.
We're all frequenting eighteen hundred Main Street now. All right, and just the last bit on the back page, as I alluded to. These are some proposed changes to the zoning bylaw that as myself and the building commissioner have started to interpret and work with contractors and applicants in reading how these are supposed to read. You know, more than once, we've been left scratching our heads. We know what the intent is, but it doesn't read that way. And in an effort to not have to, you know, have an hour-long sit-down with everybody who comes in, this should be easier to read for folks. It should be something they can figure out on their own. So just a couple of items here. Number one, multiple principal structures in the industrial one and industrial two districts. So this seems to be something that was omitted from the new bylaw. It was something that was allowed under the old one. And it's included in the business districts under the new one. And I think it's just something that, you know, looking at a hundred pages of document was just missed. So proposed changes would be new supplemental regulations under the industrial district use table, pretty much to mirror exactly what it looks like for the commercial business ones. Just saying that more than one principal building, giving the parameters for those, making sure that they're not located in relation to each other that would cause fire or something, or be unsuitable for the access of emergency vehicles, and making sure that all multiple principal structures on the same lot are accessible via pedestrian walkways and such. And modifying the table of requirements before dimensional and density requirements table, so just adding all of those items. And again, it's... The intent is to mirror the business districts, which is how it looked in the old bylaw. And I think we just forgot to put the footnotes in the new one.
Sure.
So that one's pretty straightforward. The second one, clarification to the definition of a major project in the town center. Right now, it just reads, major project, town center, any development of twenty-five thousand square feet or more. And the question came up, of course, what's in the twenty-five thousand square feet? So in reading through with the assistant town manager and the building commission, we kinda put our heads together and looking at the dimensional requirements for the business districts, which includes the town center, and specifically looking at maximum lot coverage, well, the twenty-five thousand square feet, practically speaking, couldn't just mean buildings and structures, because then you'd be looking at fifty to sixty percent lot coverage, which is exceeds. And, you know, we're not trying to set something up that doesn't meet the bylaw. So the twenty-five thousand square feet, in talking through it, we determine would be inclusive of paved areas and structures. So that's just a point of clarification, so that we're not making that determination on the fly constantly. Because practically speaking, twenty-five thousand square feet of just buildings on a forty thousand square foot lot, which is the minimum lot requirement, that's more than half. So that'd be crazy. So that's that one. And then the third one, the wall-mounted sign section. The way it... I have it... The way it reads right now, it was showing that the intention is to scale back the size of the signs with how far back from the road they are. But the current calculations are really confusing and not user-friendly. So like, the intent is to scale, but to go through the mental gymnastics to try to figure out, okay, so it's three-quarters of a linear foot per square foot of... And it just, it gets really messy. So I spoke with the building commissioner and the assistant building commissioner, and we kinda workshopped this, looking at signs that already exist in town as kind of our markers. So just looking through that business is located within a hundred feet of the street, one wall sign not to exceed three feet in height, half the length... Oh, so I'm sorry, in your packets, it should be crossing out the three-quarter of a square foot per linear foot. That's the confusing language I was talking about. The underlined is the proposed addition. And the language right after it is what I meant to strike and didn't come through when I copy-pasted it, my fault. So three feet in height, half the length, with a maximum of thirty feet. Same thing for businesses located between one hundred and three hundred, same thing. One wall sign not to exceed four feet and half the length with a maximum of forty. So, and then the third one, business is located three hundred feet or more, one wall sign not to exceed five feet in height and three-quarters of the length. So in fifty feet in maximum. So thinking through some of these signs, you're looking at, for instance, La Vida Dolce, the new bakery proposed to eighteen sixty-six Main Street. They're certainly within a hundred feet of the street. And if you look at this calculation, this three feet in height, half the length of the business's facade, that kind of, it passes the sniff test there. And then on the other end, if you're looking at more than three hundred feet from the street, you're thinking about Market Basket, right? That's one of the ones that's very notable, very far back. You can see their sign clear as day. In doing some estimations, because of course, Market Basket's been there forever. We don't have their sign permit in front of us at the moment when we were looking at it. Those letters are probably five feet in height and three-quarters of the length of Market Basket's facade. So business facade, not the length of the plaza, because that wouldn't be very fair. Nobody would have a sign, you know, bigger than that. And then putting a maximum, because otherwise, you know, you say three-quarters the length of the business's facade with a maximum of fifty feet, because anything longer than fifty feet, the building commissioner and assistant building commissioner felt that that was fairly reasonable. So again, that's a really long way to say that the way it was written, the intent was to scale based on how far back the businesses are from the street. But the way it was written was just a little, little too messy, that a lot of the sign companies were calling us going, what does that mean? So, you know, this was just to make it a little more user-friendly, not only for ourselves, but for the applicants. And that's my long speech, but I'm happy to feel any questions about any of those proposed changes.
Nope, I have no issue with the changes. It's just, you know, but I'd like to see for us, because we're gonna propose this other thing for the change, for... I'd like us to do these as these three come in first.
Together, and then that one by itself as a warrant.
And then that one.
Yeah.
But be prepared to call in this clarification and housekeeping.
Yes.
As a way to explain, again, because I just, I know what's gonna happen. I know the words, I can hear them in my head already.
I've been practicing them in my head for months.
So I wanna make sure that we're calling them those things, keeping them together, so they go in that way. Whether we get the fourth one or not, that's, you know, we'll see about that. But I wanna make sure it doesn't jack these up, because every week it's all jazzed up about the first one, if we do it first, and then all of a sudden, these fail, because people don't understand their housekeeping and clarifications.
Absolutely.
So I want these done first, numbered first, and cleared off the board. And anything that comes in after... And anything that comes in after that, whether it's us or petitioners, they can all go afterwards. But I want the, I want the cleanups done.
That makes sense. This way, it's a cleanup, not a new one.
Exactly, and I don't, you know, that way people aren't jazzed up and that way I'd like to see them call that from the get-go.
Yes.
Clarifications and modifications to, you know, I mean, clarifications and housekeeping. And that's that, you know, that way nobody gets jazzed up.
Yeah, and I do want to add that I certainly, I, having been involved in the latter half of the zoning bylaw recodification, I certainly appreciate your comments. And believe me, if there was nothing to change, I would prefer that. But I I took great care in speaking with the Building Commissioner to make sure these are really, really things that we really need to do for the good of the bylaw.
And I'd like the building inspector involved as much as possible, you know, preferably in here when we do them.
Yeah, when we do the public hearing.
When we do the public hearings. Because I'd want all that to go out in all hopes. When it gets written up in the newspaper that it actually, you know, includes that kind of stuff so that we're less apt to have people misunderstand what some things are versus other things.
Absolutely.
I have one question because, you know, obviously your your main goal here is real concrete clarification. These paragraphs, A, B, and C, all reference businesses located within one hundred feet of these streets. But a business like Treehouse, La Vida Dolce, many others are on two streets. So is it, are both streets in effect?
Yes, so that, there's also special provisions for businesses that are located on corner lots. They're allowed to have a wall sign on either side. So actually, if you look right out the door here at ten sixty Main Street, that's Para Grill. They have Para on the North Street side and the Main Street side. They are the same size and they and they both meet the bylaw in that way. So that would be, yes, the same thing.
Is the signage governed by the distance from either street? Or is both, are both signs constrained by the lesser distance?
They would be true.
So if you're a hundred feet from this street, a four hundred feet from this street, are both signs gonna be the smaller size?
Well, no, it should be whichever street dictates whichever sign.
I would think it. I think, yes, yeah, because they would be.
So it's whatever street it's facing, that's what governs.
Yes, that would be two separate permits, um, yeah.
Okay, that takes care of those. Uh, old business, new business.
I I'd just like to make a couple of comments on the Planner's Report, Mr. Chairman, if I could. So I think it's fantastic that the Eco Auto is being proactive on the EV charging, you know, and and ahead of the curve really because as we've, you know, we've discussed, it's gonna be in the in the next addition of the building code. It's gonna be a requirement anyways to provide infrastructure for multifamily to all these. I'm not quite sure I even knew that it was gonna be part of single-family and two-family construction as well. It's it's so easy, relatively inexpensive to to provide the infrastructure and certainly it gives landlords the opportunity to, you know, get tenants that have electric vehicles as well. And I think it's, I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a good, a good thing to work together with with Eco on that. On your new businesses report, it's, the thing that kind of stands out that's that's just great is the fact that all four of those businesses are reuse of existing buildings. So there's four buildings that may have been empty that are now gonna be supporting new businesses. And I think that's, I think that's very positive sign for the town. I was gonna ask some questions on the, on the, on the clarifications, but I think you answered all of those. The only other little question I had on the twenty-five thousand square feet though was when, to include paved areas. Because, you know, paved areas could be different on different lots. You know, the hardscapes could be different because of, you know, the shape of the lot. If it's, if it's hilly or whatever, you know, it seems a little subjective, the paved areas. Because, you know, is there gonna be any kind of a, you know, a way where if you install pervious paving, does that still count as a hardscape? And just something, food for thought, you know, that's just kind of what jumped out at me. When you're talking twenty-five thousand max construction, including pave, paving, paving could be patio, are we talking, or, you know, pervious paving? And we might wanna have a couple of caveats in there.
Yeah, the intention, I think, is to include any kind of finished area like patios. I would love to see more pervious pavement and if that's becoming a trend, we could probably cross that bridge when we get to it. But until it's more of a widespread trend, I think we're pretty safe keeping with impervious surface in buildings.
Yeah, okay. I I think the problem with the with the pervious paving.
Hard to maintain.
It's it's a maintenance issue, yeah, and it needs to be cleaned periodically.
But we're also only talking about town center here.
Right, it's very specific for that, yeah.
That's not a hip, I don't think there's any hilly, you know what I mean? We're not gonna run into that issue here, only if it was other zones. But I mean, for, I mean, we, we, town center is pretty, pretty tight.
It's eight fifty-five Main Street to twelve-something.
Right, and that's.
Yeah.
And that's, that's all I have.
Yeah, I, the only thing, just because you make the point, it's also nice that they're not just being reused, the buildings, but they're either being something we don't already have, which is nice because, you know, not that there's anything wrong with having multiple, whatever kind of, you know, food or whatever, but it's nice to have different things or replacing something we lost in the case of the bakery. You lose it in one place, you replace it in another. So not, you know, not a bad reuse there either, but other than that.
I did see the Treehouse rendering came in for us, right?
Yes.
That looks great. That was probably what we discussed and what we wanted.
Yeah, I think that hit.
Yep, and the only difference was they ended up moving it to the other island just because they, when they were playing through it, it didn't, you know, it wasn't, you weren't seeing it when you were pulling in, which is the whole point of the.
But we gained that option, either the other side, right?
Yes, yes, yeah, and that that signed permit is currently in its appeal period and that should be coming up any day and they'll be able to move forward with that.
Good.
Alright, other than that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion made, do I have a second? Motion made, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you, we'll see you on the twenty-third.